Agenda.
Mr. Chairman, move adoption of the agenda.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, I would also like to make a amendment to the agenda. No particular business this evening, but place permanent IO and under continuing.
Agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Subcommittee reports and updates in the future. Council subcommittee reports and updates.
We have a second.
Second, second.
Discussion. Here are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Four minutes, public conference meeting. During the training session. Only two more.
So will. Second.
Discussion. Here are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion back. Presentation. Public remarks. Public remarks. Oh, I'm sorry, that's my favorite thing. Public remarks. Please, June, raise your hand. Speaker could be recognized. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please state your name and address. Do we have anyone out there?
No. Not online.
While we're waiting for anyone out there, anyone in the audience would like to say anything on the public remark. No one's happy?
No.
We'll move right along. We'll close that portion of the meeting. Okay, now we're at presentation.
You have no presentations this evening.
Thank you. Bids and contracts.
You have no bids or contracts this evening as well.
Thank you. Resolution ordinance policy and proclamation. Resolution or natural hazard mitigation plan.
This evening, the council's asked to take a look at and approve the natural hazard mitigation plan, which is, I'll remind you, was developed in concert with the RiverCog and the work it has done regionally. At this point, I'm going to invite Margo Burns from the Cog to come up and share with you in a couple of minutes sort of the essence of not only the regional plan, but the pieces that relate specifically to East Hampton.
I think I've got. I think I've got the answer. Most people don't call me Margo. Many other things, but not Margo.
Margo, I'll await you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Margo Burns, I'm a senior environmental planner at the Lower Connecticut River Valley Council of Governments. And I just wanted to go over a few important points from your natural hazard mitigation plan with you this evening. Let's see, in your packet, you have a summary sheet, which I will be going over. You have a frequently asked question about natural hazard mitigation plans. You have your meeting notes from our town meeting that we had with staff. You have a list of regional projects, the table, and then you have your town annults, which is folded back to your town projects that were put together through the town view. And then you've got some information about the theme degrees that a plan will allow you to apply for, for your town projects. And the consultants that worked with us on this plan with all of our towns, we had 15 in our region participate. Two, Westford and Sabre, decided to do their own plan. This is your second update. Your first plan was done with mid-state regional planning agency before we joined together with CRIBA to become RiverCog. So the southern towns of the region, this is their third update, whereas this is just your first update. Let's go over the summary sheet. And the consultant, like I said, was DuBarry, engineers, and he did an excellent job for us. Scott Choupet was the project manager. They were responsible for doing the state plan of hazard mitigation and also agree all the other regions of the state. So we were in good hands at Western FEMA and state technical review with no problems. So the purpose of the plan is to reduce loss of life, reduce damage to property and infrastructure, reduce cost to residents and businesses for things like insurance, repair costs and taxes, reduce municipal service costs, educate residents and policy makers concerning natural hazards and mitigation possibilities, natural hazard mitigation planning activities to other community planning networks, and enhance and preserve natural resources. Every community is unique, but some common mitigation actions include replacement of undersized culverts, flood proofing a school, a fire station, purchase of a flood prone property for open space, preservation, education, material concerning natural hazards and mitigation actions for our community citizens. Let's see, your regional planning team representative was Matt Walsh. And on our planning team, Jeremy Carley, Richard Cox here, Russell Mellett, Dennis Musner. And forgive me if I mispronounced some of those last names. The methodology for the plan was the creation of a regional planning team. We had one or more members from each town who was responsible for getting the plan that came together in each of their municipalities to participate. We had three regional planning team meetings. We had at least one town meeting with every town with follow-up edits to their annexes and the regional plan, planning portion, which is volume one. We had two public meetings, April 1, September 2020. We had a public survey with 75 responses. As I said, it went through the State Department of Emergency Management, home land security review, and data review, which were both requirements for the plan to be accepted. And at this point, we're at a faction by all the towns and the region, which allows you then to apply for grants. The regional projects included encouragement to participate in a national flood and insurance program, community rating system of all of our towns, education, maintain updates to this plan. So we're hoping to get everybody together at least once a year in each town to go over their projects and to see how things are progressing and what help we can give. Encourage best management principles for stormwater and promote green infrastructure. Notify about green opportunities, which we sent out an email today about the plans that are coming up. And there's going to be some webinars on them if you want to, I think, talk to Dave. Encourage generator and microgrid installations. Investigate holding certified flood managers course in the region. Support communities in their water conservation efforts. Use to prevent the effects of illegal species. Ensure integration into other regional plans. Endeavor to protect and conserve historical and cultural resources. Small business education. Encourage participative participation in sustainable TT. Apply sea level rise projections created by CERCA and undercover acting team, DAS 82, as best available data. Support communities in their efforts to update flood planning management ordinances. Include flood susceptibility model data in municipal plans as a planning tool and help field check data. Assist municipalities in degree management. So for your individual town projects, the list includes replace bridge on White Birch Road with new larger bridge. Replace culvert on Collie Brook Road with a larger culvert. Replace undersized culvert on Hillport at Lake Drive. Replace the three foot culvert and undersized 24-inch culvert on Elbow Brook at Local Walk Road. Replace and upgrade the capacity of the river well, Hollow Road Culvert. Acquire additional equipment to clear roads of downed trees, disabled vehicles, or unforeseen obstacles. Demolish factory building at 13 Summit Street in daylight, Pocahontas Pond Creek and possibly remove existing dam. Develop inventory deteriorating metal culverts throughout the town, begin replacing those most in need. Work with private dam owners on a communication plan regarding the opening and closing of the dams along the Pocahontas Pond Creek corridor. Ensure all emergency action plans for any dam in town is maintained on file. Pursue funding to develop a low impact development manual for techniques to be implemented throughout the town. Develop a management plan that tracks areas in need of tree trimming and removal. Locate alternative fire protection water sources or identify alternative storage methods for fire suppression capabilities. So that was your list that your planning team came up with. The funding allows, the grant allows you to apply for the grants that are listed on the information sheet that I gave you. And probably the most important is the FEMA building resilient infrastructure communities, or GRIP for short. It's a 75-25 match, so 25 is the match of the community. So last year's round opened in September and closed in January 2021. And I think it's pretty, I didn't take a close look at the email, but I sent out to everybody. But it looks like those dates are pretty close to that this year also. Let's see, I wanted to go over the hazardous data, which is data that's run by the hazardous model for, which is created by FEMA. It's a loss and risk reduction software that they require you to run when you're doing a natural hazard mitigation plan. And it looks at the loss at a community where, which take due to hurricanes, floods, and earthquakes. And so I wanted to let you know that DuBarry ran extensive hazardous modeling for all of our towns. So if you want to ever take a look at that and do a deep dive into it, we can do that. The data is there and we can, we can do that. But this is just an example of what the data would show you. And this is what sort of those losses would be in millions of dollars rivering for rivering flood exposure. And this is for the 100-year flood zone and the 500-year flood. And then for the flood susceptibility study, it's, I want to just let you know that this is a study that we started in 2017 and was the first round that we received funding from CERCA and Department of Housing from Superstorm Sandy Money. And it was to create, well, it's a research project that's looking at how to use our GIS data that we have, our geographic information systems data from the state of Connecticut to research how to do flood modeling in much less expensive way than it currently is. Connecticut is a GIS powerhouse, and NOAA has really created some very good data sets for our state. And so this research is going on in many parts of the world and across our country. So we are participating in that. And with the flood susceptibility study, we're really hoping that our towns will take a look at the data and help ground truth it for us because it's hard to, historical flood records in individual towns are hard to come by. And it might be in the brain trust of our town staff and, you know, public works and things. So we're hoping for participation in that to help that model along. And if you ever want to take a look closer, look at that, I'd love to come and talk to you about that. So that's all that I have about it. Do you have any questions that I can answer for you?
Just any questions about you and the data, but was there any damage that flowed from flooding?
No, not that, no, not that.
We had some.
Oh, yeah, some data, sorry.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah. We did have some, I can talk about that a little bit later, but yeah, we did have some washout and some flooding with intermittent. Overall, I think some of you saw my comments in the newspaper. Overall, I said that I thought that East Hampton did well. I think we've made some pretty great strides recently in trying to address some of our hotspots with flooding. Four or five inches, I think we got in about three to four hours. So that's a very significant event, difficult for almost any storm system to handle, so.
I think just from working, going to all the towns and looking at all the plans, that the natural hazard mitigation plans have really helped towns chip away at the things that they need rectified and to help with the flooding situations that we're encountering. So it's really been encouraging to see that this planning process has really helped our community a lot. It seems that it's helping you guys too, so.
In the documents that we saw in preparation of our meeting tonight, there was the update for the 2020 Hazard and Mitigation Plan. And in that, the very beginning, it talks about the local planning team that concludes the various numbers that you mentioned. Is the conclusion of the work that's reflected in the first part of that update, is that's the conclusion of that, is that the town projects that, which you've given us? Is that you've done the work and these are the projects that have come out of that?
Yeah, your town came up with your projects. So in the last plan, there was a whole big list of projects that were in it. Some of them were completed, some of them not. Some of them, you know, for FEMA, last time it was a whole laundry list of whatever you could put into the plan, put into it. This time FEMA really wanted to look at projects that were realistic for a five-year time horizon because it's a five-year plan. And so we went through the list with your town, looked at what had been done, what you still wanted to keep on the list, and then what contained capabilities that the town, you know, does on a regular basis in.
Does this planning committee, does it meet continuously or now that they've done this work, it's complete? How does that work?
No, well, we hope to keep the planning committee together at least once a year to go over the projects so that next time when it comes to do the update in four years and we start working on it again, that we're further ahead than when we were this time.
Does the town manager provide some sort of kind of oversight as part of his office?
Yes, we'd be through the Cog, which Dave did.
That one would be right. You better have it the other way. That's right. So let me just comment on that, if I may. So you're really talking about two things. Margo's responding to you and basically on the concept of what's the Cog going to do to keep the regional plan up to date within annual conversation. I think as you talk about internally, how do we handle that? And I think that that group might meet on a regular basis. I think right now it's going to fall to, Matt will kind of drive the bus, if you will. Matt Walsh, the Public Works Director, kind of drive the bus on trying to start kicking off because most of these things fall in his area. So Matt will probably run that show mostly. And as necessary, if you think you need to address things in advance of the annual meeting, we'll get the band back together and have them sort of talk through things. That's sort of my plan. Thank you.
Margo. Not that it probably affects much, but in the background information about the town of East Hampton, there are several facts that I'm not sure are pertinent or accurate. As an example, Hood Park is not where the East Hampton once had them.
Okay.
I don't know if you make those changes or we make those.
Little things like that can change, for sure.
I also didn't know if leakage through Bevan Pond Dam was that much of an issue. It hasn't been in 35 years since part of the dam was removed. We really don't have a big pond, I'm saying.
I think that's a reference, if I may, to, they may have called it the Bevan Pond. I think that that's a reference to the pond at Walnut Street.
I wasn't sure.
I think that's a reference to the pond at Walnut Street. And that really, the leakage that we see there, and the Public Works Department kind of did some work to try and direct that water into the creek a year or so ago. That, I think, is concerning to some of the folks, in particular to Matt, as that continues to soften that dam and that dam is really more of a, it's really more of a burden. I think that's what that is referenced to.
Okay. And I was also curious, I have never heard of Del Reeves Road Dam. Do you know where that might be?
It might be off the top of my head. No, that is my fault.
Del Reeves Road is in the state forest. Borders Glastonbury and East Hampton.
So there's a dam up there that's in East Hampton?
I don't know. I've never actually seen the dam. I can tell you where Del Reeves Road is.
Is that something at the end of Midwood Farm Road?
Well, you access it, Del Reeves Road, actually, you go into, if you go up Clark Hill Road and then you go in.
Which chapters? Which chapter, State Forest Road?
Yeah, down there, and you go into East Hampton down through that way, and then you actually connect to Del Reeves Road. It all intertwines. It goes from Portland into Glastonbury to the old Nike site. And then you can go from Glastonbury around to Del Reeves and actually end up by Exit 10. It's like a, it's like a big loop there. If you don't know where you're going to go, you're going to get lost in there.
Never get lost here. They're going to end up in Glastonbury?
Soonly, you're in a house.
And is there anything, I guess, question with invasive species? There's been some commentary on social media and things in the last few weeks about some stuff in the lake.
Yeah, that has just recently, as you point out, just come up in the lake. And I don't know that yet, it's been identified what the species is. I haven't found some pictures. I think that the lake, the ethnologists will go out and lake scientists will go out and try and get some sampling there and find out what we're talking about. We've been fortunate in the past in Pocahontas Pond, but we haven't had a significant issue with invasives. Maybe we're starting to see one depending on what this gets identified. That's such a fresh issue, though. We've been really until the last few weeks in a good place.
I was just also curious, with our new communication system, we don't have a unified GIS system for the town departments?
Talking of two different things, so I'd have to look at what you're referencing specifically.
I was looking, East Hampton does not have a consolidated GIS system for emergency dispatch management.
Oh.
That doesn't come together with the communication system?
Is that in our, is the location of vehicles out in space?
Is that in our list of projects, the town projects?
Yeah, page here, 20. I didn't know if we already had that or was in the works.
Dennis, what's the reference here? Do you know?
If you're talking about the GIS, if Glastonbury Dispatch can see the cruisers, yes, they can. So if they're looking at their screen and you see the map and there's an emergency, they can see exactly where all the East Hampton cruisers are. And they actually can see where the Glastonbury cruisers are. And right now, the ambulance has, I'll call them transponders in their vehicles now. So you can actually see the location of the ambulances and whether they're on or off because they have designators. So right now, you can see those Glastonbury, you can see them.
I think part of the, part of the other answer here, now that I look at what you were referencing, I think part of what's being talked about there is is how our internal GIS system, we all use the same system for geographic information systems. It's all the same thing that the residents can see and that we can see if we have a little bit more ability to pull data out of it. One of the things we don't have, and I don't know whether we'll pursue it or how we'll pursue it. One of the things we don't have is the ability internally to produce things that then can be seen by all staff. We can produce documents in land use, for example, that Jeremy can see on his computer and create and use and work with. At this point, as far as I understand it, and I think that's the reference there, we don't have the ability to use GIS to say, for example, we have trees down here, 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 and here. And then for Dennis to be able to see that in his office and for me to be able to see that in my office and for that to be created in Public Works and be able to be seen in EEOC. Right now, we don't have that ability. So when we have those communications, we have to do it either, you know, mark it on paper, map so to speak, put pins in the bulletin board, or we have to communicate repeatedly that way. I think that's the reference there.
Okay.
One of the comments that the FEMA reviewers did make about the plan was that there were some items that merged on emergency operational plans and that we should, in the next update, make sure that, you know, we stick to hazard mitigation. So this is, I think, one of those items that kind of is on that line of which can you put it in. So it didn't make it into your list of town projects, but I, you know, want to talk about it and add it.
Because you're right. I think it has a lot to do with our emergency response plan, which Dennis and others are working on to update, so.
When will this plan be updated again?
In five years. And so we'll start working on it, probably applying for the grant in maybe three or three and a half, depending on.
And I'm assuming when it's updated, then it'll be 2020, since it's 2020.
Yes.
Assuming it's out by then.
Is it safe to say, Mr. Cox, that the list of town projects is going to be, this is a preview of coming attractions and we see our capital plan?
It is. In many regards, you're right, it is. Hales Brook, Collie Brook, you're going to see those come through unless they end up being projects small enough that our staff can do it.
Is there a plan to get a guessment of what each of these projects would cost?
As we move towards trying to budget them, yes. There is some basic numbers. If you look at the sheet that is at the back, the table that includes them, there are estimates of costs. There, some of them are tens of $20,000 pieces. When you start talking about Summit Street and daylighting the creek and some of those more aggressive things, I think the number there is a million dollars plus. Of course, Summit Street has all sorts of other issues associated with it. We don't know how to tackle that.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Then, Ken, I want to compliment you on your town hall. This was my first time here.
So you do have a resolution that we ask that you consider to approve not only our piece, but the overall planning.
Mr. Chairman, so.
We have a second. Any discussion? Here are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Margo.
Okay. A, B. Number seven. Everyone for historic document preservation grant.
The next item you have in front of you is a resolution. It's a very short resolution, as you can see. It basically is asking me, authorizing me to execute the documents and paperwork released for accepting an historic preservation grant or a historic preservation grant, document preservation grant from the state library. This is one that we do pretty routinely every year. The clerk's office will utilize these funds to, in most cases, re, I believe, what do they call it, redo records essentially to get them into a different format to allow more space in our vault. Or they'll use it for those kinds of activities to improve document storage. In this case, the clerk's office is using those funds for map storage. So we're talking about the large subdivision maps and other mapping that we get. Some of you that have been involved will recall the large vertical map, vertical map storage documents where they hang, or cases where they hang. The plan is to get at least another one of those to add to the collection that we have. Additionally, in conversation with the land use department, the clerk is supposed to be sharing the funds this year. We're going to direct some of those dollars to expand the amount of scanning document storage, electronic document storage that the land use department and the building department can do this year. You'll recall that the town's regular budget includes funds for that activity and we're going to try and do a little bit more and get through that project more quickly.
Any questions?
$5,500 total, just for those of you playing along at home.
Mr. Chairman, move adoption of the resolution.
Second. We have a second. Discussion. Here are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Subcommittee.
Sure, I can. Sure, I can, I can address, so you've got one, you have actually a couple of subcommittees for the town council. The appointment subcommittee you hear from on a regular basis, the other subcommittees you have going right now include the water subcommittee. You'll recall the council did approve an RFQ at its, one of its most recent meetings in June, that document was completed and sent out and we are expecting those responses back this week. The good news is we seem to have interest out there, not only did, had we received a phone call or two from firms asking some questions, but I got affirmative responses from some firms that we solicited directly, basically firms with which we were either familiar or that had been working for the town in the past, we sent them directly a notification and many of them indicated that they were, were looking into it and were planning to respond. So that's probably the, the biggest update we've got coming from, from the water subcommittee that we had that RFQ and we ought to have a selection for the council to consider either by the end of the month or it be August 10th, I believe.
Do you have any sense on the number of submissions we'll give?
I do not, I would, I would be venturing a guess because they will get at least three, but I don't know that for sure. The next item you have for consideration, I'll invite the chief to come up and talk a little bit about a couple of changes to some, some of the general orders in his department.
Thank you for having me tonight. In continuing going over our general orders to make sure they're being cut up to date and in preparation for the department filing for some types of accreditation due to the police accountability bill, we continue to go through the general orders and tonight you have two before you, both are existing general orders, the first one being the use of force general order, it requires minor updating and reporting of how we report our use of force to the state of Connecticut, specifically the way it is now if an officer was to discharge his firearm to take care of a sick or injured animal, as the way it stands now, he'd be required to complete a use of force report and send it to the state. The state does not want that, specifically with Public Act 19-90, it eliminates the need to report the use of force to destroy a sick or injured animal. And that is the only change to that general order. And the other one is youth investigations, back in December of 2020, Superior Court for Juvenile Matters eliminated family service needs referrals, which basically dealt with truancy and the way that they have revamped some of the juvenile laws, the family service needs is no longer part of the youth investigations, no longer does it court except those referrals like they used to. And that, given the general order, a good portion of it dealt with family service needs, so if you had a counselor that G O, there's a, a lot of process, I think we're gonna go like eight pages, probably three and a half. Minor changes, I'm continually going through the general orders to make sure they're relevant and keep them up to date and I'm trying to do a couple of times so you don't get them off, so those are the only two minor changes.
Questions?
Except you, I guess, minor questions, see if you can, but these changes are being mandated from state or being mandated to all municipalities, is that correct?
These changes to these general orders, is it being dictated by directives from the state?
Some are and some are just where, as we go through them and review them generally as we go through the general orders, you see, well, that's not right, a general order should have been amended because of a public act that came into place. And both of these, the first one was a public act and the second one was a memorandum that came out from the juvenile court, Superior Court, Superior Court of Juvenile Matters. So to answer your question, yes, these are laws, general orders, public acts that come out that require agencies to put their general orders in compliance with whatever that may be.
So again, just a really minor, very minor question, looking to, I guess it's, it's your first general order, I guess it's section 2.1 on page 14 where you got the change language? The only one. It's on page 12 or 14, it's the body, it's the actual change in that, in that general order? It's the first one?
On page 14 or page 12?
Page 12 or 14. It's where the actual change is.
Yes.
So do we report, I mean, do we internally, if, I guess my question is, this is being directed in terms of information reporting to the state, right? So if, if a police officer were to, to, let's say, shoot, now we say an animal, that includes canine, all animals, right? Or is there a specific?
We're dealing with, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, I guess part of the question I have is, is do we, is the word destroying different than kill, is the word animal, does that include canines and dogs and things like that?
So if you have a sick or injured animal, that would not apply to a canine, so to speak. If there was a canine that was injured, we would not put that animal down. We would attempt to get a vet to do that, we would call the animal control officers to try to take that animal to a vet to have it euthanized. When I'm talking about sick or injured animal, I'm talking deer, a raccoon, a rabid opossum or something like that.
Non-domestic animal.
Non-domestic animal.
That's right.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
With respect to, I guess I have two questions, yes, with respect to the other general order, and I, I don't know how they kind of relate to what your, your overarching comment. I guess the first one is on page 14 of section 6.6. That's the one change dealing with, again, the mechanism through which the police department, I guess, directs to, to schools.
Correct.
And was the elimination of that language, was that tied to the fact that we don't have a school resource officer now currently?
Correct.
Would, would it be, would it make more sense though to leave that language and just have a parenthetical to, so that to the extent that one is retained, to the extent that down the road there is a special resource officer, you would go through that, that officer?
Okay, because I don't have a school resource officer, it does not belong in the general order and that's why when the general order was written, there probably was potentially some assumption. But if I was to have a organization come in to inspect our policies and they happen to pick this subsection and they would say, where's your school resource officer? And I would say, well, we don't have them, and they'd say, well, it shouldn't be in the policy. So that's why, as a matter of housekeeping, you removed it. We could always put it back in.
So I, so to me, I guess as a matter of policy, I guess I understand that if you had an SRO, if, if a town were to retain an SRO, then the department would, would change the general order to reflect, change circumstances, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. I guess I, another question, I guess I just have, has to do with page 11, on the processing of juveniles in custody. Now, is, is that, is that tied to also, I guess, the, the, the December 2020, I think judicial rules that you were referring to? Why is it, it seems to me, why is it that we would strike out all the language as to the type of information that we would get upon the rest of a juvenile? Is it a privacy issue, is it a, keep matters under seal?
So a lot of issues dealing with juveniles are basically sealed for, for a matter of record. There are certain situations where we're allowed to release the photograph, the fingerprint of the juvenile, if the crime he or she committed goes to a certain level. Other than that, we can only refer to them as juvenile one, juvenile two, we cannot produce that information. Specifically, this is more a procedural thing where we don't have a juvenile personal information sheet. If we were to process the juvenile, we would do it under our standard records management system, which has a separate section in there specifically for juveniles, juvenile information, you know, the families, the parents, siblings and stuff like that, and the photograph specifically with the case number and the letters JV, juvenile, we used to have this placard that you would hang in front of that, now with our updated police department and the records management system, it's all done through a camera and it's internally flags that individual because of their age as a juvenile. So those are some of the things, it's, we don't have that mug placard, we haven't had that in ten years probably. So, and the fingerprint cards, there's no longer two getting fingerprint cards, you fingerprint them in the AFIS machine and that's it, there is just one electronic transfer. And again, those are, the prisoner cards, it's more of a housekeeping measure and now it's all on the records management system. But we have to be specific because if, if they get audited, they would say, well, where's your juvenile information sheet? Well, we don't have that, it's record management. That's why it's just being taken out for housekeeping. Doesn't change the way we process a juvenile, doesn't change the way we house a juvenile, doesn't change the way we release juvenile records. Juvenile records are contained in our records room in a separate free throw file cabinet that basically stays locked all the time because juvenile records are just, it's happening secretly. Yeah, because they are sealed, it was, you don't have to worry. I understand, yeah. I guess the last question I have, again, is has, with respect to, I guess it's page, I don't know if this is just a typographical error or something I'm missing, it's on, I guess it's page 12 of that specific, we have holding a juvenile for this particular day and this section deals with, with respect to adult-related offenses. On section D, I guess it's section 1D, which is on that page 12, we have a 16-year-old, you don't mention a 17-year-old, that, that is a typo or is that just a, is there, is something I missed?
What, so here you've got.
On what page, sir?
It's on page 12.
Section 1D.
So you've got, I just didn't know if that was a typographical error or if there's something, if you look at H, it refers to 16 and 17-year-olds, but if you go to section F, 1D, it just says a 16-year-old, I didn't know if there was something that, that.
Really typographical.
Okay, okay, I see. I didn't know, I didn't know the 17-year-olds is a special category, didn't they? So, so.
I'll make that change, so it's like 16 and 17.
Any other questions?
I have one, but maybe it's not for the chief, going back to a question that came up earlier regarding the SRO. The Board of Ed did have one at one time, is that correct?
I'm, I'm not aware of us ever having an SRO.
I thought we had, I thought we had. There, so the, the individual they had was not an SRO.
Talking about the person who served security at the town, at the municipal?
Yeah.
No, I don't think he served as an SRO, right?
That's correct, Day Luke.
Oh, thanks.
You're welcome.
Yeah. What role did he fulfill, out of curiosity?
So Day Luke, who was a retired Connecticut state trooper, he was a armed security officer, he, he filled that role, that was his title and he has since left and now he's been replaced with Frank Nevico, who is also a retired police officer.
And what's the difference between that role and an SRO? I think it's probably the question that I have.
So a armed security officer would be employed by the Board of Ed and is there on a permanent basis providing security to the school. A school resource officer is a certified police officer who also can spend time in the school, but he's, he or she, his sole purpose is not to be in the school necessarily all the time and would have some role to interact with the, the youth, whether it be high school or the middle school, and be in a mentoring aspect, teaching classes, health classes, being a part of the curriculum and being part of the school, but having a law enforcement side because of their profession, but not necessarily with the sole purpose of having that law enforcement function of making arrests, like has been reported in the media, that, that's the only reason why the school resource officers are there, is to make arrests, that's, that's totally contrary. It's designed to build, mend, amend the separation and, you know, mentor the children and to be in the school on a, on a daily basis, so that's the difference.
Okay. Thank you for that, Clark.
Thank you.
One question. So under the, truancy complaints now, how does that handle and who handles it?
The school handles it, this, yeah, the school handles it through the truancy. And again, the, the family service needs, if, for example, the school called up and said, or a parent called up, instead of having a problem with my son or daughter because they're not going to school, we would refer that to juvenile court. And the, the goal is, is not to, you know, give the child a, a juvenile record, it's designed to get them to counseling and find out, what, what is the underlying cause of this truancy issue? Is there a problem at home? Is, is the child having issues or is there an external issue, whether it's something going on in school where they don't want to go to school? Is it bullying? By having some type of counselor mandated because they're now referred to juvenile court, it kind of forces the child to say, well, you need to sit down, I need to figure out what's going on. Before that, sometimes the parents, they just, they're having issues getting that last final step, so, but it's still handled with the, the schools.
Chief, just a quick question?
Yes, sir.
We, we've been through updates in the general orders, about one involved, I guess, last year and a half or so, maybe longer. Where are we in the pecking order of completion or don't we ever complete?
So I will be here probably every other town council meeting for the rest of my career in Connecticut. As you know, the police accountability bill has required all law enforcement agencies in the state of Connecticut to become accredited. We have to achieve our first level of accreditation by December 31st of 2022. The police accountability bill was allowing it to either be Calea accreditation, which is a national accreditation, or state accreditation. It originally was passed as Calea, it went back with the chief saying to the legislators, we don't mind being accredited, but allow us to have state accreditation, which is state-specific, which would also save towns a lot of money. This national, national accreditation is, is, is not state-specific. Every police department that is Calea accredited applies to these same standards. The state accreditation had 327 standards, Calea has over 400. So the state accreditation did not pass, so now we have to go to the national accreditation and we have to achieve 400 and so on standards. So it is gonna be a continual basis to change our general orders to be in compliance with something that's not state-specific. As an example, Calea talks about holding cells in prisoner facilities, they're thinking of a jail in South Carolina, North Carolina or Florida, as opposed to our jail is temporary holding for no longer than 48 hours, 72 max if it's a long holiday. It's very difficult, the state accreditation would have been much easier. But to answer your question shortly, I'm gonna be here a long time.
And I guess one follow-up question, just for local pride, where do we stand in, in adopting these, these of the other departments in the state of the towns?
We're all in the same boat. We're all in the same boat.
You're not ahead of the schedule.
Uh, no, no, and on top of that, we have. And on top of that, we have mandated cameras that we have to get onboard. Those have to be onboard by next July. And then six months after that, we have this accreditation and I'm doing the best I can.
I'm not saying you aren't.
No, it's just, and everyone's in the same boat. Portland is in the same boat, you know, Middletown's in the same boat. Big and small agencies are in the same boat with, with, whether it be the body cameras or accreditation. And quite frankly, there's a lot of agencies that are not accredited. And the biggest thing is, is you do what they call an onsite where your peers come in, basically carry you apart and prepare you for the actual accreditation. There's not enough assessors to do that in the state. And they just, they just don't know how they're going to deal with it. So we're, we're kind of waiting. I'm not waiting, I'm going forward, you know, and we're going to apply for national accreditation. We were waiting in the conversations I've had with the town manager every Wednesday. We're like, well, we're waiting, we're going to go state, we're going to go national. Well, now we know they didn't pass us, so now we have to go with the national accreditation. So then start that process of applying and, and start the ball rolling because we know we're going to get there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I was trying to point comments how the police forces improved over the years. And this is going to, Mr. Johnson's comment about when shooting a, a sick animal. About thirty some years ago, I witnessed a car hitting a deer, both deer and both deer's legs. Deer laying the side of the road, screaming, a stat awful scream. Police officer shows up, won't mention any names, empties his clip, after deer, misses. Runs out of ammo. Homer politely went in, got his 3030 and assisted the officer.
That's embarrassing.
Pete, were you on it that time?
No, a close friend, just.
Okay, moving right along.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move the general order 3.1 use of force, the general order 6.6 use investigation.
Second?
We have a second. We have a discussion.
Hearing none, all votes in favor?
Aye.
Both. Hearing none, both prepared.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. B, consideration of, of an agreement between the town, three staff in the local R1-216, natural association, municipal employees.
Name, yes, name. Thank you. The next item we have is that consideration of, of the collective bargaining agreement between the town of East Hampton and primarily, primarily employees of the town that work in the Department of Public Works and in what I'll refer to as frontline positions here in the town hall. The proposed agreement is a three year agreement, successor to one that's been in place for many years. Highlights of the agreement, which was in the, or there were two versions of the agreement in the package for today's meeting. One that both shows the, one that shows the highlighted changes and one that is a clean version for anybody who wanted to read it. Anyway, and I was starting to say, highlights of the agreement in the first year, call for a 2.2% general wage adjustment, which matches the agreements that we have with the other two employment unions in the town that were agreed to and approved earlier this year. That's offset, the 2% general wage increases offset by increases in their retirement contributions and their health insurance contributions. Retirement contributions will change in the first two years of the agreement and their health insurance contribution will raise in, or increase rather, in the third year. Additionally, in the agreement, we've modified a variety of pieces of language throughout for cleanup. Additionally, we modified, clarified some of the language and some of the positions in the wage scale, reclassified one or two positions, one position in this case in terms of pay and corrected the title and some other cleanup activities of another position in the wage scale. So those are, those are the, the highlights of the changes. If anybody wanted to talk about anything in particular, I certainly would be willing to do that. But as you know, we work with a attorney who provides us with not only a great deal of background information, but handles the language discussions at the table and, and additionally, I sit at those conversations and we have the full course direct with. The, the contract is recommended and you have been through it, so if there are any questions, I'm sure you can.
Well, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that we accept the contract as being proposed, a working agreement between the town of East Hampton and the local R1-216, the national association of municipal employees, NAGU. The contract will run from July 1st, 2021 through June the 30th, 2024.
Second?
We have a second discussion.
If I might just add during your discussion, just to let you know, the union has ratified this agreement. So if the council finds it acceptable, it is to be able to do that finally.
Okay. Do we have no further discussion, all votes in favor?
Aye.
Both motion carries. How many will you report?
Thank you. If I could highlight just a few things from my written report, which is included in the, in the packet. And I will get to and talk very briefly about our significant rain event Thursday and Friday morning. But let me just, let me just mention just a couple of other things. For those of you that had the opportunity to look through the report and noticed that the senior center is working on a grant application to get some funding to replace the, the bus that we have, the vehicle that we have for transporting seniors. We're hoping to, as you'll recall from the, from the various discussions we've had during the budget, really expand that program and really try to get seniors mobile again in town. And one of the ways we're going to try and do that is get the right vehicle from this particular grant process. Because that grant process has been sort of, if you will, punched up by the various COVID expenses and the various decisions that have been made at the federal level, it's very likely that we won't have to pay anything for that plus if we're approved. So there will be no local match. I, I mentioned that because the community will see a notice in the paper next week, the 23rd advising that we're going to be making the application. And then the council will be looking at it on the, at its next meeting, the 27th, two weeks from today, and being asked to consider approval of that grant application. So that's coming down the pike. Two other items that I'll mention that are kind of exciting. One is that, as you saw, there was a letter included in the packet to Sweet Jeans Cafe here in town, just congratulating them on their, they're being named as the outstanding new business by the Chamber of Commerce, the Middlesex Chamber of Commerce. I, I took the opportunity to congratulate them on that. Certainly everything we've heard and my own experiences there has been very positive. Restaurant there, I hope it flourishes for a long time to come. The other item I'll mention, and it's very exciting, the library is certainly head over heels about it. Struck this year in the 20, in the year that ended June 30, 2020, 2021, that is, 100,000 barrels. First time we've ever done that. And as you saw in the report, there has been steady growth in that activity. And that even includes some time under COVID, when, as you know, we've talked about, the library has really done great work in engaging the community and getting them to use the facility that they own to the highest ability. Two other items I'll mention, one, bioblast and the lake. As you know, the lake has been, many of you know, the lake has been sort of right on the edge this summer. We've had no warnings, we've had no closures at this point, but we've been kind of on the edge. And so we've been very closely monitoring that, especially after the rain events that we had. We're anticipating doing a bioblast treatment in the upcoming week. And it is very likely that we will do a bioblast treatment the following week as well. The intent is to make sure, as the bioblast product is, is intended to work, to make sure that there is a significant amount of competition going on for the nutrients that are undoubtedly in the lake. Remember, that's the purpose of the bioblast process. That's, those are microorganisms that we add to the water in an effort to outcompete against the blue green algae, which is the problem trial, to outcompete against the blue green algae for the nutrients that are in the lake. So we're right now in discussions with our vendor there to do not only, as I said, a treatment this coming week, but one in the following week as well. We'll be taking some significant testing through all of that process to make sure that we have great data and that we know what we're experiencing. Because in August, we'll be preparing our permit application to the state for the renewal term on our permission to apply that product. So that's what's coming down the pike there. Last, let me mention a little bit of talk about what we experienced on Thursday and Friday. As I alluded to earlier, I think we probably saw anywhere from three to five inches of rain in the time period between about a quarter to seven Friday morning, when the, when the, the gauge was reset and about 11:30 or noon, when the event finally ended. That's a very significant amount of water, but I will say that is, I will stand by my comments in the, in the paper. I think we did remarkably well. We did have some washouts, Bear Swamp, Flatbrook, Daily Road and another one that's escaping me right now, all had washouts. Those are all dirt portions of those roads have washouts. But by the end of the day, Friday, the department had been through, that is, Department of Public Works, had been through and those were all passable again. Additionally, we had some washout on a few paved roads where the gutter line began to undermine the roadway. And those were not significant enough such that they caused closure of the road. Those are items that we'll have to come back and repair. We did have a couple of road closures in town that day. Highway 196 was closed by the state for a period of time south of Highway 16 in the area of, we're poking about creek crosses there in the area of the Butler gravel pit, if you all can imagine where that is. That was closed for a short period of time. Again, water was overtaking the road and because it was flowing and because it was deep enough, the state did shut that down for a time period. Our more significant event occurred on Lake Road and across, at the crossing of Hales Brook. Lake Road on the north side of the lake was closed for a good portion of Friday. It opened up Friday afternoon, about the middle of the afternoon, simply because of the volume of water. All of our creeks and streams were running, running well beyond their normal capacities. And at Hales Brook, the three crossings that exist there were completely overwhelmed and the water was flowing over there. At one point in its earliest time, I think that probably at the crown of the road, it was probably 10 inches deep. And at the side of the road, it was probably in the neighborhood of 12 to 14 inches deep. Of course, it's just because of the slope of the road. Basically flowing over the concrete wall on the lakeside as opposed to flowing through the pipes. So that was shut down for a while, but ultimately opened up. And I have not heard any reports of any damage to the road in that instance. Maybe there's some around the edges, but no damage to the road from that. Nevertheless, you saw on the list that is an area that is of concern and that's because of the degradation of the, of the pipes underneath. So that is the essence of what occurred on, on, on Friday during that rain event. Any questions? On that or other things?
What I'm curious is to understand why Hales Brook got on our list, but why didn't the crossing 196? Because that's not the first time that's happened. Funny that didn't make it.
Yeah, so, you know, I, I, not having been part of the process, I don't know how they dealt with state roads and whether that's something that we would have to kick up to them. And I don't know what they got identified there. That was a fairly short closure. I don't think it was more than an hour or two, right?
Yes.
So I can ask Matt what, whether that gets kicked up to them or if that's another plan.
Thank you.
Any other questions in the town meeting, do you have a report? Okay. Moving right along.
Thank you.
Appointment?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make some reappointments from the appointment committee. Our design review board, Kevin Burnham, Michael Tijone, Scott Hill, now Helen Wetland, Jeff Warren.
Second? Second? We have any discussion? Hearing none, all votes in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Oh, yes. Under appointments, again, under American Rescue Players Subcommittee. I would like to appoint Barbara, Derek and Tim to that subcommittee. And maybe Dave, you can, the department heads have been coming up with items and for this money.
I can, I can certainly go into that if you'd like me to. I think the intent is to develop a subcommittee that would work through what I'll refer to as pre-vetting of those dollars. Yes, you're right. I've asked the, the various departments and including the fire department and the ambulance to provide me with their thoughts and ideas and potential uses for the funds that the town will get. Again, I'll remind the community, East Hampton is slated to get approximately $3.7 million. We have about 1.8 of that right now in the bank. And about 12 months from now, we would get the other half of that. So I've asked them to provide that information to me. They have, they have given them to me now. They don't always all relate to their appointment, their particular departments. Some of them have thought a more broad townwide scale, I'd like them for that. But nonetheless, they have provided it to me and I would intend to boil that, that information down, make sure we've got everything we need to, or at least the information initially, and then share that with the committee that you're proposing at this point. I think the intent is, as we've talked about it, is for that committee to review that information in detail and then provide a recommendation to the council as to how those funds would be expended.
Any comments on that?
Under the section of the agenda, we have a, a subcommittee. Barbara, what's in the report? Can we have a list of all the subcommittees? I'm losing track of how many we've got, who's on it.
Sure, you can. I, I think we only would have four now, right? Two, two standing and then these two additional ones? We'll check that and make sure, I think you have four.
Maybe not all of the, of the subcommittees that the council are of. I think Mr. Markin indicated that when we change the agenda, that will become a regular part of the agenda updates of the subcommittees.
Yes. Yeah, Mr. Truss.
I'll remind everybody what we have. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, he just wanted me to remind the council how many subcommittees you have. You have, as I recollect, like two permanent and then two short term task specific, but we'll confirm that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions around this subcommittee? Okay, hearing none, moving right along. Tax refund.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think you need a vote there, I think, turning up?
No, no.
Subcommittee. Okay, he's taking care of it, okay. Just, just confirming.
With the vote on, I can complain.
Nope, you just get to announce it. That's, I was just confirming that.
Tax refund.
Tax refund, $2,338,98.
Second?
We have a second?
Second?
We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all votes in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. We are back at public remarks. Please use your raise your hand feature. Please state your name and address and ways you remember. You have three minutes to speak. Do we have one in our electronic?
No.
Audience? Do we have one here that would like to speak? Yes, we do.
Yeah, Bob Heine, 19, Bedford Road. Just a quick question, maybe you could get it quickly answered. How is the rain event going to affect the chip ceiling progress?
So yes, that has been, I think, delayed now twice. I'm, I'm closing my eyes as I'm remembering back to my conversation with public. I'm, I'm closing my eye because I'm remembering back to my conversation with Public Works Director last week. We had it in our, in my report. I think it is delayed now again, another week from the date I had in my town manager's report this most, this most recently. So I think I might have had the 13th or maybe this week or next week. I think we're talking about, let me just confirm. Testing my memory. Right, so he was, he was scheduled to begin this week. That is now off until I believe next week. So it's at least a week delayed based on their challenges elsewhere. The whole line moved back, so stay tuned. I think that that's the plan at this point.
Okay, thank you. We have any other questions? Do we have anyone else out there? Oh, we will close that portion of the meeting. Communication correspondent and announcement.
Mr. Chairman, just one announcement. After two weeks of rain delay, the Goff House Cathedral concert is expected to go on this Thursday. Flamingo big band, it's an all-women's group. I think there are 13 or 16 members, 18, so it's going to be quite interesting.
Okay, good. Let's see. June 2021 Board of Commissioners, if part of your package, we will, yes.
I don't want to interrupt you. I just was going to make a mention of a piece of work on. Okay, so one of the things I also wanted to mention, again, for those of you that, that were able to look at the town manager's report in the public, you'll, you saw in our letter that I drafted to Senator Norm Needleman, basically at the request of the sub-subcommittee, so the airline trail subcommittee that works with the community on advocating for the airline trail and planning for that. You saw in the letter that basically I was encouraging Norm to insert himself into and encourage the State Bond Commission to let the dollars out that have been allocated for trails. We have a major project that we're trying to accomplish over towards Portland to connect the segment, about a 1,200-foot segment of the trail near our Department of Public Works facility, north and west of Highway 16, 66 intersection, that requires a fair amount of dollars. And the State Bond Commission is sort of holding those in and hasn't released all of those dollars, let alone for the previous, they haven't released them for the new fiscal years, let alone the previous fiscal year. So you see a letter in there encouraging him to insert himself in that. I believe he has attempted to do so. We'll see whether there is success in trying to get the bond commission to move forward and release those dollars to the benefit not only of East Hampton, but other communities that have trails in the state. Just wanted to make sure you saw that and that the community was aware we were making that.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, we'll go right into a separate session. We have a second on that?
Yes.
We have a second?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Chairman. We have come out of the second session and we took an evaluation, annual evaluation by town manager. Results of that were quite satisfactory. In regard to compensation, the town manager, I would like to make a motion to the board. Effective July 1st, 2021, the 3% increase of base compensation with town manager, which would be added to base in the contract under his contract section for a...
We have a second?
Second.
We have a second? Do we have any discussion? Here and none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Calls motion here.
Thank you very much.
I move a German.
Second?
We have a second discussion? Here and none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion here.